Good morning. Good morning, and we're going to get started now. Before we begin the public hearing, I'd just like to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19 and its variants, city council committees are currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make these remote hearings possible. Instructions for how the public may view and offer public testimony at public hearings of council committees are included in the public hearing notices that are published in the Daily News Inquirer, Legal Intelligence, prior to the hearing, and can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll to take attendance? And members that are in attendance, please say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Christmas, please call the roll.
Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the City of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Council Lady Brooks.
Good morning, Council colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Doh.
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Goodey.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Council President, colleagues, Philadelphia, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Council Lady Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Gray.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Good.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Council Lady Quinona Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to the public.
Good morning. And good morning to all. Thank you, our committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. This is the public hearing of the committee at hold regarding Bill Number 220003. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Section 2500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Council Manic Districts by revising the boundaries of the Council Manic Districts under certain terms and conditions."
Thank you. Before we begin to hear testimony from the witnesses we have for today, everyone who has been invited to the meeting to testify should be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Because the hearing is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation and privacy. By continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Additionally, prior to recognizing members for the questions or comments they have for the witnesses, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature that will be available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular person. To the witnesses, you will have three minutes to testify. We're going to take a brief moment. Madesto, you need a moment to connect our witnesses? Are you good to go?
We are just going to need a few minutes, Council President, to get them connected into teams.
To allow our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our witnesses for today. So, as you know, this triangle is currently split between District 6 and 7 in the current map.
This is more effort for us, the NGO, because we must interact with like four seated council office to help the people in the local Northeast. It's not only helping the Chinese, but my colleagues, NGO, the community on the right is facing the same issue. And to the Chinese, they are limited on all language resource that the city council office provides to the constituent in this neighborhood. So, in the local, the state rep office, Jarrett Solomon, and the Chinese NGO like my organization, the North East Philadelphia Chinese Association, and the Philadelphia Chinese Chamber of Commerce, we've been filling in the gap to help the Chinese residents, you know, receiving information and services. I hope our city council can provide more language assistance and further representation to this community. I propose a solution that by reducing the district split, we can eliminate replication in costly language services, because it's not from cheap. If you need four offices to have our language service, it would be expensive, right? So, I saw your temporary district map proposal, it's still splitting the area, and it doesn't ease any issue that we are facing and hope to resolve. We suggest merging the triangle area into District 9 to keep Oxford Circle community in one district. If that cannot be done, then we hope maybe the new map could keep the triangle in one piece, that keep the triangle in District 7. Then the Oxford Circle is shared by two districts instead of three. So, we do not recommend District 6 to cross over west of the Bolivar, because cutting into a different neighborhood, and it's not safe for people to cross US1, a major highway to go to government, to get government service. In conclusion, we request keeping that Oxford Circle neighborhood, we keep it in one piece, so it would be less confusing to people if we do cost and increase efficiency to city council and NGO services. It can concentrate resource to implement language services for the local Chinese residents. Thank you for your time and attention in this matter, I appreciate you having me here today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony, we really appreciate it.
Our next witness is Mark Zachary.
Good morning, I'll state your name for the record, please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, my name is Mark Zachary, I'm a resident of West Kensington. Thank you, and I'm going to echo others in the last meeting, who have said that this process was completely done behind closed doors, probably in a smoke-filled room, behind mahogany-paneled doors and fine whiskey, I imagine. You know, the only real community input that I'm aware of was the Committee of Seventy hearings, and in those meetings, it was made very clear that splitting up neighborhoods was not in the best interest of those neighborhoods. I mean, you've got this gigantic Titanic-sized gerrymandered tow that sticks out into the heart of Fishtown, and I can't understand it, because, you know, even in terms of the Council President's explanation that you have to work with divisions, it doesn't make sense, because you have so many divisions that you're including in this giant Titanic tow that you didn't have to, especially the ones east of Frankfurt, and you could have a more contiguous neighborhood division. Also, the 7th district has, you know, appendages sticking on the east side of Kensington Avenue and to the east side of Front underneath the L, where they really shouldn't be. You know, it's pretty clear to me, I'm more in the Fishtown, you know, South Kensington, West Kensington area, so it's pretty clear to me that the 7th should maybe extend down to Gerard, Fishtown could be the line, and, you know, the Council President could, you know, take back the Philadelphia Museum of Art and a little pockets elsewhere to make up that population, you know. A part of me is wondering why you would want to split up constituencies like that, especially when commercial corridors that are so important like Frankfurt, Front, you have to go to three council persons to get something done. This is really just unacceptable, and honestly unbelievable to me. I mean, it kind of makes me wonder if like this growing and shifting population that's in that area over there, that it's in the best interest of council persons to keep that population split up, so that our voice isn't heard? And it's just, there's no really other explanation given for it, because the division explanation doesn't make sense. And speaking of the divisions, this entire city hasn't been remapped in 70 years. Every one of these divisions should be remapped, rethought out, there's ones that are way higher population than others, it should make more sense in a logical manner. And you know what, I hope that's done, from what I understand, it's pretty easy to do, because there's, you have to gather 100 signatures, and I hope that's done, because next time, there won't be an excuse that there's division reasons why you have to split up neighborhoods. It's really not, it's really not okay, and in my mind, there's no excuse for that giant, especially, the worst thing on the whole map is the Titanic tow extending from 6th Street all the way east over to north, past Frankfurt. Thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary, and we're not allowed to smoke in City Hall, so there was no smoke in the room where we had the conversation. But on a serious note, I do concur with you with respect to addressing the division lines. I've actually had a conversation throughout this process with the City Commissioner's Office. It is way past time to address the division lines and wards and divisions because of the differences, the variations, where you may have a division with 400 people in it and another with 2,000. So, you should anticipate that that process will be taken under serious consideration as it relates to the City Commissioner's Office, because you're right, it does need to be addressed, it would actually make it a lot easier to do redistricting. So, thank you, thank you for your comments, we appreciate your testimony today. Mr. Christmas, next name?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, before I call the next name, I would like to note that Councilman O has joined the hearing and is now in attendance.
Thank you very much.
At the record, we reflect Councilman O is present.
Our next witness, Mr. President, is Melissa Robbins.
Good morning, state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, my name is Melissa Robbins, I live in the Fox Chase area of Middle East Philadelphia. Good morning to you, Council President, council members, and the listening general public. It is not enough that our beloved city currently holds titles like poorest city and highest in gun violence, but our city is in complete shambles and chaos. Most of our residents have suffered through decades of inadequately funded schools, high rates of unemployment, neighborhood divestments, redlining, blatant racial disparities and inequities, and police brutality. And clearly, you all know that I could go on and on and on. But sadly, our residents haven't heard the slightest clue about redistricting, gerrymandering, let alone prison gerrymandering. Most people have no clue what these terms mean. I've had so many calls of people calling me, asking me, Melissa, please explain to me what this is. I even had a teacher call me and say, you know, this is my own ignorance, but could you please explain what prison gerrymandering is? So, clearly, this is a major, major issue. Sadly, you know, a large percentage of our population is illiterate and cannot read, so how on earth would they ever know what's being done to them if we don't do the right thing by them? Currently, you members have an opportunity to do what is right by those who have been done wrong for so-so long and disenfranchised. I ask that you take the time to balance the map by ending the local prison gerrymandering and returning the prison population back to their home of record districts, so that their communities can no longer be robbed of the resources and funding that rightfully belongs to them. The 6th district should not continue to benefit from those who are often not even welcomed into their community. The 1st district, the 5th district, they have upwards of 163,000, while if you look at Councilmember Jones's district, it looks like he has roughly around 143,000. This is a major problem, because we all know, it's no secret that the 1st and 5th districts has the highest populations of high-income earning whites, we know that. And if it's a need based on numbers, then you have to do the right thing and make this map right. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to go back and make the changes since you initially presented this to us, and we don't even know that all the council members even participated in the process. If they did it, this is wrong. And you've had long enough, and we've had long enough, to create a process so that the general public is involved, our voices are heard, and that we all, all of us, including you city council members, can walk away satisfied with what you've done. And as the caller before me said, it's been decades since these lines have been redrawn. And look at our maps for the wards. They've been sitting there forever, and our populations have shifted, people have moved in, we have now 1.6 million people instead of we have an extra, you know, 100,000 people. We've got to make it right. And you guys know that if we continue down the road that we are continuing, that we're going to continue to feed into this toxic white supremacy of black and brown people being just underrepresented and continuously being marginalized, and this is not the outcome that you want, this is not the outcome that we want. You have to do right by us in this city, and you are our voices, you are our public servants. We believe in you to do the right thing, and we want you to do the right thing. Let's turn our city around, and let's heal our city. You have an opportunity right now. We know that you have until February 12th, or I think they cut your compensation, but take the time and do right by Philadelphia, make our city better. Thank you all for listening to my comment, but I trust that you will do the right thing for the City of Philadelphia, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony, we really appreciate it.
The next witness, Mr. President, is Mark Frog Harris.
Good morning, state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
My name is Mark Frog Harris, I'm president of Cathedral Park CDC, and I have three comments I'd like to make.
Please proceed.
First of all, one of the districts, I believe it's 10, is excessively small, it needs to be made a little bit larger, it can be consistent in size. Secondly, there's a portion of North Philadelphia which for some reason was added to District 3, it's very inappropriate, it would be difficult for her to represent them or for them to get proper representation. And also, that should, it should stay, you know, connected to whoever's representing North Philadelphia. And that may be tied to my first point, that District 4 needs to have a little more area added to it. And thirdly, in Cathedral Park, we've been dealing with a problem for a long time, where the boundaries between the, on the north side are unnatural, they run down the middle Lancaster Avenue, which is quite artificial, the natural boundaries at the mainline railroad tracks, the result of this is just like a one-block wide strip, which doesn't have a lot of resonance in it, they're pretty much on the 4800 block of Marion Avenue. But for Parkside, which represents the northern side, it's an orphaned. And for Cathedral Park, which represents the south side, it's a little difficult because of this artificial boundary, so we'd like to ask that if possible, this can be rectified, you know, put the boundary between the districts at a natural point instead of this current artificial one.
That it, sir?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next witness is Tamir Wilkerson.
Good morning, just state your name for the record, and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Tamir, and I'm 13 years old. I'm asking our city of Philadelphia to stop practicing prison gerrymandering. We need our resources, social justice stops the violence, PA voter, court watch.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next witness is Aiden Banks Dorsey.
Hi, my name is Aiden, I'm 10 years old. I'm asking for our city of Philadelphia to stop practicing prison gerrymandering. We need our resources, social justice stops the violence, PA voter, court watch. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for getting engaged at such a young age, we really appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you somewhere down the line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our final witness is Alicia Dorsey.
Good morning, just state your name for the record, and please proceed.
Hi, good morning, good day, City Council, I'm Alicia Dorsey, family community advocate, PA voter, court watch, testifying from the cracks of Philadelphia today. I'm addressing concerns for Bill 22003, redistricting and prison gerrymandering. We are advocating for social justice of our census allocations to stop the violence in our city. Firstly, we would like to highlight the need for transparency in the creating of the bill. Had it not been for COVID virtual, our youth today would not have been able to take part in this hearing. I'm advocating to protect at least 21,000 in census allocations, per our brothers and sisters behind bars each year for the next 10 years. The census results shape the futures of our communities. As census data stops by stop, as census data informs how billions of dollars in federal funds are distributed for health clinics, schools, disaster recovery initiatives, affordable housing, fix the potholes in our city, because we really need our roads fixed desperately, and other critical programs and services for the next 10 years. We need social justice for our census allocations. We need the gentrification of our resources and our votes to stop. Social justice stops the violence, PA voter, court watch, made in America, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it. All right, that concludes our witness list for today. If there appears to be no further questions or any comments from members, and no additional witnesses, okay?
Council President, we have one more participant for public comment that just came in.
Okay, cool, all right, let's get their name, and let's proceed.
Madesto, who is the person?
Hi, this is Jerry Vatamala.
Oh, good, okay, good morning, just state your name, well, you stated your name, and just proceed with your testimony, sir.
Hi, thank you for letting me be heard, my name is Jerry Vatamala, I'm director of the Democracy Program at the Asian American Legal Defense and Education Fund, ALDA. We've worked in redistricting for several decades, we did want to just state for the record, there are several Asian American communities of interest within Philadelphia, primarily Chinatown and Center City. Most of the areas that we are concerned about in South Philadelphia are respected and kept whole to the extent possible. We are a bit concerned about Mayfair, Oxford Circle, and Taconi. And when we do superimpose our communities of interest or in the alternative, look at a racial heat map and see the proposed divisions, we are analyzing and ask that you also do the same to make sure that communities of color, particularly those groups that are protected under the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965, which includes Asian Americans, that these groups not be unfairly divided and have an equal opportunity to elect candidates of their choice.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it. Okay, that being the last witness and there are no further comments. And there are no one else to testify. I want to thank all of the witnesses for their participation today. We really value your opinion. And now I invite all witnesses to please disconnect from the hearing before we go into our public meeting and we will now pause the proceeding briefly as multiple participants leave the hearing. But let's so give us a signal as people disconnect.
Okay, we are ready to go, Council President.
Thank you. We will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on the bill before the committee today. We will now convene the public meeting. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance disindicate by saying a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Christmas, call the roll.
Council Lady Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I am still present. Thank you.
Council Lady Brooks.
Morning, Council President. I'm present.
Councilman Dow.
Morning, Council President. Present.
Council Lady Godea.
Good morning. Present.
Council Lady Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I am still present.
Council Lady Gud.
Good morning, everybody. I am present.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Present.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning again. I am present.
Councilman O.
Good morning. I'm present.
Present.
Council Lady Parker.
Present.
Council Lady Quinona Sanchez.
Good morning. I'm present.
Councilman Swilla.
Good morning. Present.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning. Present.
Council President Clark.
Good morning, President. As we are in our public meeting, the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion on the amendment to Bill Number 220003.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 220003. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee. I move that the amendment to Bill Number 220003 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the amendment to Bill Number 220003 be approved. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
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 Those opposed.
Aye.
Aye's had it. Motion carries and amendment to Bill Number 220003 has been approved. Chair again recognizes Councilmember Parker for motion on Bill Number 220003 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that Bill Number 220003 as amended. Be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that Bill Number 220003 as amended be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All those in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Those opposed. Aye's had it. Motion carries. And that concludes the business before the committee as a whole today. I want to thank you all very much in advance and thank you for your attendance and thank you for your participation.